Yeah, we're on the...
We're on it.
We'll even get to see ourselves tonight, too. We're on the air, being recorded. Okay, open the meeting, couple of planning board here, January 9th, 2017, at 7:00. First order of business, minutes from a very, very, very short meeting we had.
Right.
Last meeting, is members have a chance to review them? What do you think?
I make a motion to accept the meeting as written for the 7/19, 2016.
I'll second that. Okay, no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And nobody against it, okay.
Mr. Chairman, the public hearing isn't until 7:15?
Right.
A continued public hearing, but we can take items under seven?
Okay, do I have, we don't have any vouchers or?
We do not.
Anything? Oh, Mr. Chairman, I think so. So, okay, go on down, Steve, what do you think we should redo?
Yes, so again, the public hearing, the continued public hearing isn't until 7:15, so if the board so wishes, we can take up item seven, reports, correspondence and discussion. First one being the zoning board of appeals recommendation for 47 to 53 South Road.
Have any of you gentlemen know about that, reviewed it or anything just here?
I don't see none.
It's the, you know, tax shop slash nursery area?
Oh, yeah.
Garden center, it was. A new person wants to run a business there because the various...
They have a copy.
You guys have a copy? Do you want to review that and we can make any comments to answer the board on this? If you could, please. Myself, I have no, I think, always been in the business there, what's the matter with somebody else doing the same thing? I say no problem with zoning or anything like that, myself. Do we have any campaign finance requests?
We do, it's simply a signature, Mr. Chairman, the board's asking me to have each of you sign this, all my passes we have. Yeah. Chuck has already filled his out, so that's why his name's not on.
That's why I just signed one?
Some of the predated open space plans.
You guys, any comments on that?
On the garden zone? No, no, I only, I just remember when we dealt with it in the past, we had the residents were concerned, the ones on Robin Wood, because of, because of the trucking and the noise associated with it being in the residential area, but outside of that.
I think that might go back to the time where they wanted to run, include their trucking business in there.
They were running their truck business there at the same time, yeah.
Okay, so this is just going to be a nursery and landscape business, so Mike, any...
Should we date this?
Looks okay. Yes, please, today's the night.
Since no one else did?
So, any other comments, anyone take action, or what, we respond to the ZBA on this? I have no comment for the ZBA on it. So, shall I have, entertain a motion that we answer the ZBA with just no comments? Want to make a motion?
Sure, I have a motion to answer the ZBA, no comments with regards to the 47 to 53 South Road request of special permission.
Special permit request?
Okay.
Okay, second?
I'll second that.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And nobody against, so that business is done.
And we just took up the next item, which was the campaign finance report.
The gentleman with Tasson that around?
Yes, that's on, sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
7:08, so we have seven minutes.
And the open space?
Well, with regards to that, can, rather than jumping right in there, do you mind if we just take a few minutes and just read this by ourselves, since we didn't have it ahead of time?
I don't mind, okay. Chairman, want some time to study up on this hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, good. For the time we have, don't see these people here?
There in the hall. Yep.
7:14.
Thank you. You here for the...
Yes.
Yeah.
Hello?
Nope.
Right there. Hello?
Um...
Want me to move down, give these guys some room?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I like my stage.
Do you have a sign machine for?
We're doing tonight.
All right.
Good.
She's right out of the shade, does that work?
Yeah.
I have in my closet.
Yes.
Boom.
That's it, good.
Yep. All right, well, it's been a little while, I think...
We've got to open them.
Oh, yes.
Just give me a minute now.
Yeah, he had to grab, run and grab some upstairs.
Yeah.
This?
Yeah. Just so you fellows understand, we're on TV tonight here, too.
Okay. So, you gotta behave?
We sort of.
We gotta behave tonight?
We have to try not to, but swear at us too much. No fighting. Have you gentlemen met now Steve, part of getting his sign machine?
He spoke himself out.
Our new full-time administrator, okay, so... He's still getting adjusted, and we're getting adjusted to him here also, so you might have to bear with us some of the things here. Other than that, I think, why don't we open the hearing up?
Why don't we wait for him, so he can keep notes on when we open it?
Oh, okay.
Unless you want to start taking notes. Now you're good.
That's your job.
No, no, no.
You can add...
Only when someone's not here. He's just floating upstairs.
Excuse me if I'm pushing, but I don't want to be here all night.
You don't? Oh, I thought you enjoyed it.
My bedtime comes early.
I thought it was fine.
When you get my age, and the steam.
No, mine comes real good, I get up way too early and close the door.
Thank you.
I try to get up early, but sometimes it's really...
I'll need that, that's all right, I'll pass it, I'll send it right along.
All right.
Okay, Steve, I'm going to open up this hearing.
Okay.
7/17.
7/17, continuation of Duncan Dawes' development for 61 through 63 Main Street. And, okay. We left off with, the gentleman has been to the Conservation Commission?
Yes, yeah.
And, um, where, how does that stand?
So, sorry, just to read you, Brandon Ducharme, Ducharme, Dillis, Attorney Kepaso, and Steve Catalano, Catalano Companies. Yeah, we had the initial meeting back on Halloween, we went over the presentation. At that point in time, we had received all comments from various boards and committees. We went through that, all those comment letters at the last hearing, and, you know, given the proximity to wetland resource areas here in the back, obviously, we wanted to wait and get through Conservation Commission, and we can update you tonight that we have. We've been before them a few times, and we worked through DEP, and at their last meeting, they closed the public hearing and voted to issue an order of conditions based upon the revised set of plans. Your board has also submitted copies of those revised plans, as well as the response letter that kind of outlines the comments that were made and our responses. I can quickly just kind of go over what some of the additional changes have been since we went through that letter. One of them is we were able to go out and do some additional soil testing, which was one of the comments, because we had done some soil testing kind of off the existing parking lot, and we have two subsurface infiltration basins for the drainage. So, we went out and we excavated two more test pits, those were actually witnessed by the Board of Health, which is typically done by Kaylee, who was able to go out there and witness those with us, and we actually ended up finding better material than we had before, so it didn't really change the design, I mean, it's a little, probably a little more conservative, it's got a greater offset to groundwater, as well as the material we found was more permeable, more permeable, essentially, so. One of the other changes was, we've updated the operation and maintenance plan, just to address snow removal, as with the existing site down the road, all the snow removal is basically going to be cleaned and removed from the site, there'll be a contract with the same landscaper, snow removal company that they use now. And the third thing was, there was some talk about this fence kind of between, this is the police station and our site, we've modified that fence to basically lower it and open to, basically have like an open type fence that's not going to obstruct any site distance as you kind of look down the road. We've gone back and forth with Ken from DPW, gone through those comments, and really, I think where we're going to spend some of the time tonight is talking about the site circulation, and one of the outstanding, or the only outstanding comment that I know, unless there's any other raised tonight, is in regards to the westerly side of the building, we've, we've shown an ingress and egress, and the comment has been raised as to having this dedicated as an ingress and basically circulate all the traffic through the building. We, we talked about this briefly at the last hearing, and again, just, just to kind of recap that, I spoke with Ken again today, just to kind of get a handle on, on the reasoning for the comment, and to see if we can kind of address what the concern is. And in speaking with him, you know, the, the large issue relates to congestion in this area. It's obviously, I mean, the first thing we say, it's a minority the time that you're actually going to have this issue, it's during that, that morning commute time, you know, majority of traffic's going to be moving eastbound here, that's obviously a busy time of the store. We're going to be drawing, you know, patrons in here, which goes basically right through the parking area here, and as you look at, you know, what we can do to alleviate that, the concern is, you know, you've got people parked here, they're going to have to do turning movements to get out next to the site, and you've also got people coming in. The issue we raised before is kind of regardless to whether, you know, these in-store folks, whether, whether they're coming out this way or coming this way, either way, they're going to have to do a turning movement that's going to impact the travel lane as you come into the site. As you look at statistics on, you know, during those peak time, on average, it's six to seven cars that kind of stack up here, our existing queue takes seven. Obviously, we've got the benefit that we do have a factor of safety, you know, it's not ideal, it, you know, it does go through our parking area, but at least it's not, you know, backing up onto Main Street there. And basically, you know, our thought is, you know, as people are trying to enter and exit the site, obviously, the more options we can give them is better than having less options. I mean, Steve can certainly comment as well, and this isn't, he has other stores, where this is, this is a typical layout, I mean, you could have issues with, you know, an oversized vehicle, some of it a trailer, in, in this line here, that has the potential to, at this, at that point, if it was a one-way dedicated, you're going to bugger up the whole site, essentially. Also, you know, by having all the traffic exit on this easterly side, there's, there's now a potential to have congestion issues on this side as well, so as, as traffic comes around, let's just assume a majority of that is going to kind of get on and continue on eastbound, as you, as you exit the drive-through line here, at this point now, you've got to integrate into where they're stacked up in, in order to make a right-hand turn.
And you sponsor for what?
Well, primarily employee parking, you know.
Why wouldn't you put the employee parking over here, since they're not going to move for the majority of the day, and take this and move it over here? Because people that are coming in here are here, they're either going through the drive-to or they're going into the building. If they're over here, people coming in behind them, they're, they're going to be looking for a spot, so they're more likely to let you out and come in, because that's what they're looking for.
Yeah, I mean...
This, this to me looks like a potential problem area.
Kind of the way the stores...
Because people are coming in and out, and if this drifts back into this area, your queue, now you potentially have got people blocked in here. They can't get out until the queue moves. Just seems to me like not a very good design. I know it may be a standard design, but...
Yeah.
And that queue that, since our last meeting, I, I worked during the week, I went down on the weekend, for a couple of weekends, and just sat in the parking lot outside the laundromat and just timed, just, and yeah, seven is a pretty standard number on a Saturday morning, at 8:00, 7:30, about the time I got down there, I stayed about a half hour, and we've got a good crew working down there, they're, they're moving cars a lot.
Thank you.
But, I agree with Mike, you know, like, the last time we talked about that queue backing to seven cars would be into here, correct?
No, no, seven, seven is basically what it's handled in the queue line, you get beyond that is where you're, you're coming into the parking.
So, I don't know what it looks like on Monday through Friday.
And I actually did similar, I actually did a count, and there were certain times that we were, you, you actually have the ability to queue 14 in Pepper right now, maybe even more, depending on how you turn that weird corner, but there were multiple times that I was sitting there that you had a standard of 11 to 12 in the line, waiting to come all the way around that core screw of a shape there. If you have 11 or 12, where does that put you, 11 or 12 from the window around, where does that put you in that design there?
Yeah, I mean, 11 or 12 is, is obviously going to push you into the lot. The only thing I'd offer is, is, you know, Steve's probably got better numbers on this, but even as you look at that morning commute, and the reason why the line is that long, is probably about 70% of the patriots coming through there are doing just that, they're going to stay in the line, you know, it's a small number of people, you know, you're looking at a large lot here, I mean, and obviously, we're trying to encourage people, you know, this is a, you know, a laser store, we provided the outdoor seating, I mean, we're still looking to encourage people to come in, but, you know, during that peak time, a lot of it's commuters that are really looking to grab their cup of coffee, you know, so they're, they're going to be circulating around there. We're showing a lot of parking because we want that flexibility to, to bring people in, but, you know, certainly, you know, the minority of people that are going to be parking, you know, whether they can park here. In terms of this, I mean, just the way the store's set up with the main entrance and everything, you know, parking over here and having to, you know, walk through the site...
The, that parking lot, although it's larger, there's only four cars larger, correct?
Four, than the existing?
Than the existing.
Oh, no, I think the existing, you have, what, maybe 10 spots?
Yeah, six to 10 spots, there's not many back there.
Yeah, this is...
More than that, you have six, at least six or seven, at least on the back face, and three or four on the building face itself. You have at least 10 right now.
Okay, all right, so I mean, let's say 10 is what I thought I covered, yeah.
Yeah, with those, with those 10 spots, I mean, what's your, in the first two or three spots, it's an absolute nightmare to get in or out back in.
Oh, yeah, without a doubt, right, no, I'm just, I'm just talking, total spot. See, you're, you're increasing it, but it's not like it's a drastic change, it's not a, it's not a overdesign by any means.
No.
You could, you can use those four spots easily, because sometimes people are out on the street, so that'll work out well for you, especially if the town is looking to have no parking on that side of the street.
Well, that's the big thing, yeah.
You'll, you'll need that.
Yeah, and we have 27 spots here, so it's, you know, it's quite a bit bigger, and that's just it, we're basically trying to get everybody off, off.
Well, you pretty much have.
And, and I hear, the Dunk, the Dunk and I go to in Clinton, it's the same, it's basically set up the same way, and, you know, typically, you might be running it when the line backs up, and, you know, you may have to wait a minute, I mean, on average, I think, what do you guys target, maybe 90 seconds to process an order and get somebody through?
Yeah, it should, it should be about two and a half minutes from the speaker post through, you know, through the line.
And it is, yeah. I mean, what I witnessed.
You know, and a lot of times, what I find is, you know, if the line's backed up, I mean, people are obviously more likely to let, let you out, you know, and to be able to just scoop through and get out to, you know.
Yeah, you know, I think, I think my biggest concern is, police has mentioned it, highways mentioned it, DPW's mentioned it, everyone's concerned about that, two-way egress there. I've been to a number of locations that have just single-way egress, again, you have McDonald's in Townsend, you have the, the one near the fire department in Townsend, single-way egress coming into that, you have Air, there's a single-way egress coming into that, so there's a lot of different locations that are designed to push in and out in that loop format that you're trying to avoid here. I, you know, talking to the chief, the police chief, his biggest concern is that, you know, we have, you have two-way traffic, if someone's trying to cross here, cars start getting blocked up here, you're only talking two to three cars and you're across there, one, they have an in-and-out one-way directional, and their out is right here. So, you're adding to the equation, if you push down here, it gives the, the police department a little bit more flexibility to be able to make sure that there's not, nobody in front of them if they have to get out in case of emergency. And I think that's the one big piece that we have to remember, is that we do have that loop design on the police station, because it doesn't have the in-and-out on both sides.
And if there are people coming out here...
Right.
You've got a minimum distance, if you want to get into this drive-through line, you've got a minimum distance to try to get over without blocking this line.
I got it.
This, this looks to me like, I don't see how it works.
Is Shirley, is Shirley a one-way in-and-out? I don't recall.
Shirley's got two, Shirley has a, well, has the driveway that goes up.
You have a bypass all the way around, too?
No, there's no bypass.
No bypass.
Once you're in the drive-through lane, you're in the drive-through lane.
You're in the drive-through, okay.
I mean, I guess, and, and the reasoning is obviously to alleviate site congestion, and what I can, we don't want site congestion any more than you guys do, you know, we need this to run smoothly, and, you know, based upon our experiences with this layout, this is for the layout to help alleviate that congestion.
Well, simple question, I mean, I know a lot, a lot of times with different parking designs, where you come square and it requires more, more multi-point turns to actually engage into one direction or the other. If it was turned to a single-direction flow coming in and out, that would allow you to do angular parking, which allows you to do a quick back-up and go, rather than doing a multi-point turn and trying to dodge traffic, right? I understand...
Um, I understand what you're trying to accomplish, but with everybody else having such a big concern about the two-way traffic, how, how about approaching it in that manner where you, you're pulling in, you're at an angle, you're backing up at that angle and you're, you know, leaving, that allows both, both lanes never to have to make that multi-spin. Because if, what's your parking space depth right here right now, eighteen or twenty?
Uh, it's probably eighteen.
Yeah, so twenty with the twenty, so. Your, your depth is good, I mean, you're pushing a full-size pickup, extended cab at that point. Uh, but with a twenty-four feet across, depending on who's backing that up or driving it, you still gonna have to make a multi-point turn to go into a square parking space. What's your width on your parking space? Can't see it from here.
Uh, the, probably nine, nine feet.
Nine feet, so, yeah. So it's, it's not squeezed down to an eight and a half, but it's certainly not,
Right.
It's certainly not a ten, which gives you more flexibility to make that nose, nose-in turn.
Yeah, but the only comment I'd do to the angle parking is, you know, we looked at that additionally too, you know. And one of the objectives, you know, we're, we're right down the road, one of the big things we wanna try to do is get as much parking as we can.
Right.
Once you go to that angle, you actually end up losing a few spots. And as it is, I mean, that was one of the things we've worked through with conservation is, you know, trying or minimizing how much impervious area we're actually increasing on the site. So we're, essentially what we're trying to do is get as many parking bays that we can for the amount of impervious area.
But if you're going angular similar to this,
Yeah.
How, how much are you actually gonna lose over here, if any?
Uh, it's probably a couple of spaces, yeah.
Well, I mean, your angle's gonna pull you into here, so that's dead space anyhow, right? If you're starting at this point.
Yeah, but, yeah, so it's just, like typically, it's just a little wider, yeah, so. We've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight spots there.
About the same distance.
Now, kind of over, um, maybe seven, six. You know, roughly eighty feet. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, ten, thirteen, two. That's ten. And then that's, you know, above, above the same, so it's a couple, couple spots.
I agree though, with the angular. Back up and out, and you're not trying to, especially if you wanna go out this way. Now you're over here somewhere.
And that's a twenty-four foot wide aisle, which is pretty standard for parking layout.
Oh, yeah, no, no.
You know, so I mean, grocery stores, I mean, you know.
Yeah, no, no, again, the parking layout, again, is all within standards, if not, a little larger than a lot of them designed to. Um, again, the biggest concern is really you have a huge impact on what, or could have a huge impact on the, on the police station. Um, and that's really, I think, the biggest issue across the board.
I think this is a fantastic design, except that safety complex is next door, you know. That's, and we've, we've gotta, we have to take that into consideration. And I, I mean, if you, if you've got extra parking spaces, if you've given one or two up to give an angle, to create flow, to give that a single-direction egress, entrance and egress.
The, the, the other piece of the equation is that when springtime hits, you, and fall, you have lacrosse that plays out back. And they typically park on the street, so I'm not even sure what's gonna happen with that once,
No, that's a difference.
Well, it's, it's part of that whole safety building, that's the whole back, back lot behind the police station. And if there's no parking on the street, that'll be interesting to see how much they end up on the parking lot.
The big issue for the in-and-out for us is, is the back. If people are, if you have a large truck and, with a pick, with a trailer on it or something, people come through in the morning, you know, they snowmobiles or they have something else in the back of that truck. I mean, they, they're in the line, they'll block the whole, if we're only one way, they'll block the whole site. Those other sites you were talking about, they have a little bit wider in the back end of it.
Mm-hmm.
We don't have that, you know, that ability to have that width around the back, that extra length. And that's really the concern is, you know, we want the, obviously, the traffic to flow for, you know, everyone that comes, you know, as best possible. And, you know, it's, you know, this type of design, we've seen, you know, time and time again, work very, very well. So that's, that's why we put the, you know, the two-way in-and-out on it.
I think, well, I guess, let's jump off of that, I guess. You guys still popped up with, with, uh, Ken. One other thing that Ken had that, uh, you guys didn't have much, didn't really answer in his questions was on number ten. Uh, it talks about the eight percent slope coming in, in and out, um, into the property. Does your new soil testing change your, um, elevation?
No.
So you didn't change that at all, you, you just, well, with more of a separation from water table? Is what you know was from your infiltrator?
Exactly. So I'm basically, you know, talking to Greg who sat down and went over these and we kinda responded to Ken, you know, if he had any issues or whether he's satisfied, or has addressed his issues. You know, he kinda looked at it, you know, across this room, and we're essentially talking, you're gonna be up two feet. You know, I think once we kinda showed him and laid it out, he, he was satisfied.
Yeah, I don't, I don't really have an issue with the pitch as much as, you didn't answer the drainage question. Uh, you basically just said you'll maintain at the entrance. Uh, he had talked about a strip drain, did you have any more conversation with, with regards to a strip drain or catching an additional catch basin?
No.
Or what, what are you doing with that part of it? I know it's not much area, but it is adding into what's already there.
Yeah, so actually, we're gonna be putting less drainage out in the street than what's, that's previously existing.
Okay.
So there's, there's no way we can capture it all.
Yep.
Uh, but it's, it's gonna be less. Kind of the issue with collecting the strip drain, there was nothing really to tie it into in order to get into it.
That was my question, are, are there any catch basins in that area at all that?
No, so I mean, one of the things that's kinda come up even since I kept the conservation commission is there's a catch basin on Main Street that essentially we've talked to Ken about improving that catch basin by adding, uh, deep-sump, hooded catch basin. To treat that, so not only would we, would be providing benefits-
Whereabouts is that roughly?
Coming down by Donalds.
All right, the one that's at Donalds?
Yeah, 'cause that-
That's, that's the closest, huh?
No, no, this one's closer, but obviously-
It's uphill?
It's uphill.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, but I'm saying that's the closest downhill, is that all the way down there?
Correct, yeah. And right now, that's untreated and it directly discharges.
Yeah, because that just jumps into that little crosswalk there. Okay, alright, so you're working with him on that?
Yes, yep.
We're, um, the town engineer asked about the no parking signs on Main Street.
That, that doesn't go through us, that goes through signs. There's, we have a sign group that would deal with that.
I think so. We don't have to worry about that.
No, actually. Did you adopt a sign, sign job?
I don't know what I got.
You did.
I don't know.
Yeah, Sue was on-
I don't want my list, it changes daily.
You were on that list. I know Ken, Peter, Sue was on it, so you, you adopted that position.
There you go.
Yeah, whatever it is.
So we'll, we'll take that up at the appropriate time.
Right down, another one to add.
Just out of curiosity, I mean, what would be your, if they ask you to put signs there, would you do that?
We could, uh, you know, I mean, I don't know that we would, we wouldn't have the authority, but we would pay for the signs, you know, and the town could put the signs up if you wanted, you know.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't see why not letting it be all one-directional. And the more I'm looking at it, why, why isn't that better for everyone? Because even if, if it is a crowded and congested time, um, seven o'clock on a Tuesday morning, instead of cars waiting in a parking lot, preventing people from coming in and getting into spots, if those people are still waiting, they'd be waiting in the bypass lane. Wouldn't they?
Yeah, I mean, one of the things they would mention really is the issue on trailers and trucks with, with longer stuff, but I don't know how many you really deal with, I mean, yeah, that's the issue.
I mean, I think what we talked about even at the show was, was the whole belt and suspenders. You know, I mean, so, I mean, obviously, if, if it was backed up to the point where, you know, someone's parked here and it's easy to go this way, there's nothing to prevent them from doing that now.
Right.
You know, but it also gives somebody the flexibility that's here, that if the line is backed up to here, that they can just pull out and, and get right out, so.
Yeah, but you're doing the thinking for them this way. You, you're, you're doing the thinking for them, telling them they have to go this way, there's no option for them to be groggy at seven o'clock in the morning and, "I'm gonna go back out where I came in."
Our only concern would be the fact that, I mean, we, you're, you're gonna basically stripe it and put up a sign, but, you know, you could have somebody that now tries to do a movement and get out this way, it's a one-way and now they're stuck, so.
They won't do it twice.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they might.
It depends on who it is.
The bottom line is, is, is obviously, we want people to come to use the store. So we, 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 we need, they need to get through this site the best, best way they can so they wanna drive through the site. I don't think we're looking to do something that-
No, no, again, I just, I just know that in other areas, it does work going single-direction. Um, I understand your concerns with regards to tru-, you know, the trucks and stuff like that, but if, if that radius is big enough to handle the tractor-trailers that are doing deliveries, it's gotta be big enough to be able to handle a truck with a trailer on it. You know what I mean? Um, and I know you must have looked at your tractor-trailers because that's what all your deliveries are in.
Yeah, I mean, it, they will, when the tractor-trailer goes around though, they're not gonna be able to get around with cars in the drive-through anyway because of the turning radius. So it, it definitely creates an issue there. And if the, um, trash is being picked up, you know, which is not, is very infrequently and we're obviously not gonna have it done in the morning because we have a neighbor next door, so it'll be during business hours, so that'll muck things up. It's, you know, that, it just, it creates a few issues going all the way around and, you know, um, it's, we're talking about, it could be an issue, I mean, if it became an issue, if you gave us the opportunity to put it in, have two ways, and it became an issue, and we could, we could always switch it back again. We could say, okay, it, you know, we are creating a problem for the police, I mean, the police are our neighbors and be happy to switch it around if that was the case, you know.
I, I really appreciate that, that's, but if, if this is an issue, it's not like you're, you're, the issue occurred in front of, um, another business in town. It's, it's, that's our police department, you know. It's, it's a, that's just the whole piece for me. If, you know, and again, I, if that was, not to say that I, I don't care about other businesses or other homes or people or anyone else, but, you know, this, that could be, that could be a life or death situation. Like, seconds matter, I don't, I just can't, in good conscience-
Yeah, because our, our police are also EMTs, we have such a mix of what we have there. I mean, luckily, fire's not there now, though, but they could certainly move back because they're on Park Street right now, but.
And if our, our police department moves out of there, certainly we could revisit that.
Well, I don't think we're, I mean, are you, are you concerned with cars backing out into the street from the site?
Or even someone waiting to queue in, you know, anything, anything here at all. Or this person trying to come across and crossing lanes and blocking it. It's just, if you, if you watch the police station now and, and some of the, some of the cars coming in and out, it, it already, it's kinda like going to Lorden's. That's a single-way in-and-out that worked fine. But sometimes when cars are coming out, it just blocks up that Main Street really quick with someone not paying attention or trying to get across, um, that little area, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think the way we're looking at the queuing and then we kinda have the overflow, I mean, in that very remote setting where it could actually back up, you know, most people are either gonna keep driving, you know, going out on the next one. Or the other thing is, if you're sitting out here and all of a sudden there's an emergency, you know, the lights come on, you know, this person's just gonna have to get out of the way, it's gonna just keep driving. So it's not like there's anything really impeding them from getting out of the way, there's something impeding them from going in to get their cup of coffee.
I would think that the parking along that street would be more of an issue than, is that, then you don't have a driver even in the car as opposed to people, you know, that are driving that are moving within the, you know, lanes of travel.
Yeah, but they would, they're typically not gonna block the entrance where someone in the queue could be sitting. Not by choice, but they wind up blocking the entrance.
But again, I think we're talking queue, I mean, you're talking-
It's like twenty, something, twenty-nine cars.
Right, you haven't really seen that, so, yeah. No, there would be no queue for the drive-through for that.
Right, I think the real question is, is, is the exit.
Right.
You know, I mean, if, if there's a, if the queue's out here, it's not, it's gonna be there whether there's an exit or not.
You see, a car's going in.
So I mean, I think the real question is, what is the exit? What's the opinion of what the exit is gonna be?
Right, but if, but if, look, again, if a car's coming out of here and turning, this guy's coming out of here and turning, this guy's coming out, you, you've got a lot potentially of exits that could happen at the same exact time. You add that with all of a sudden a police emergency and people just looking at each other, not for nothing, but you certainly get a lot of people that, again, are half asleep, looking at you just coming out of the one now or trying to figure out, you know, can they come in off a crowded street into the back section? And they try to run over the, the ball that you guys have there set up for the trash truck and, you know, I've seen a guy take out the guardrail because you had to get in there before me, so it's like, okay buddy, now you own the side of your car, but, so you don't always have the most intelligent thought process happening. And the thought process of the blue lights going on and, oh, I gotta move, often, often may not kick to some people. And that's, you know, again, that's my concern, I think, again, seems to be what police, DPW, highway, everyone's worried about right there.
Question. If you wanted them to make that the one-way in, now how would you like to see it? See what things to be done so that cars won't try to go out that entrance in?
Well, again, typically, you would narrow up your entrance. When you're narrowed up entrance and you're angular parking, kinda sets your, your position for everything. You go straight in and you, you give the, you apply the option of going out of the direction.
Yeah, so that's your answer.
What's that?
That's your opinion.
Well, that would be my thought process, I mean.
Yeah, so for, in order to get, you know, larger trucks through deliveries and stuff, we need, we'd need it this wide. So essentially, we're not looking, even if this was one-way, we'd leave it this wide, just-
Well, you'd probably bring it down to like twenty, right?
Yeah, what's that?
You'd probably bring it down to twenty. You don't need it at twenty-four.
May, maybe.
I mean, you're out, you're outs, you're outsats, or if you're in, can be the same, it's, you know.
Yeah, I mean, all of these turning radiuses in a vehicle, I mean, I mean, you're talking about maybe reducing four feet of pavement.
Yep.
At this point, probably leave it there. The only difference you do is you, you'd have to re-stripe that as a, as a do-not-enter, but like, the ones, the ones, the examples you brought up, I mean, that's what it is.
Yeah, they're narrowing down a little bit, they're, they're pretty much equal to the opposite side, but again, you have two ten-foot lanes here, correct, probably?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, and when your, yeah, when your radius is coming in, what you're, what you're running for trail is your, you won't have much of an issue, I mean, the guys can back into the one in Pepperwell now, they can certainly make it into that. It's amazing what those guys can, uh, figure out how to back into, so.
Another question. How many stores do you have that have your traffic flow like this?
I think just, uh, well.
I mean, is this your norm, most?
That's a standard.
That's a standard design, yeah, it's a standard design. I was trying to think-
Do you have any, and, second part of my question would be, do you have any that would be our way or what people are asking for?
I don't, um-
You don't have any?
I don't, I don't have any that are, I, I mean, you do have, you know, like Townsend Elm Street next to the fire department is, it's just a, it's sort of a, like this, you know? Um, and you come out on the side of the building, but there's, there's enough room around the back and the parking, you can, you can, from all the, all the stores, you can access the exit without going around the drive-through. And if this lane, like I said, if this was wider in the back, we had, you know, some more feet here, it wouldn't even be a discussion.
It can be any tighter than Townsend. Townsend's tight.
Elm Street, yeah, but you can, you, you don't have to go through that drive-through to get out, you can go from the parking lot right-
If you're back here, you are, I mean, I guess you could come up here and then turn across the front.
It sounds like you park in the front and you park on the side.
Right, but if you're on the side, you're going around the back, right? If you're on the front, you'd come up the-
No, you don't have to, you don't have to, you can, you can come out just like this and you don't have to, you're not forced, yeah. But that would be like Townsend if you were forcing all the, all the traffic to go around the, the back. Because that's exactly where you have the confusion.
And Elm's similar with, where it has the parking on the side and on the front also.
Hubbard, yeah, Hubbard is down and, down in front is where the parking for the stores is, and you can go out without going around the drive-through.
And you can go out that way, yeah.
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 So really, the, the biggest issue here is you don't have the depth in the lot to really give you an access across the front of the building as well.
Right.
So you're telling me that basically most all your stores are this layout?
Yes. You have access to exit, to a, a road without, um, going around the, going through the drive-through exit lane.
Two-way on that entrance area.
And usually, you know, I mean, from a standpoint of police and fire, usually they don't want anything in that. And usually, you know, I mean, from a standpoint of police and fire, usually, they don't want anything in that, they want that access, that lane around the building in case of fire, so they can get around the side of the building, without, you know, hitting any type of traffic or anything like that, that's usually supposed to be a clear lane in most of the, most of the areas.
I hope we grab Ken and place you again, and.
I think they've made their comments clear, I, I, before I read their comments, it was my concern from our last meeting.
Does Ken, did, had Ken have any additional comments that he sent after they had sent their comment?
Nope, he stands by this, as does the police chief, standing by their comments, opposed to the layout as it's shown on the plan, they want a one-way in and a one-way out.
I, I just don't see how it, you know, I'm, I'm not a businessman, okay, I, I'm not gonna pretend to be one, but I, I don't see how this would slow business.
It doesn't, yeah, I mean, from, from a standpoint of business, I mean, it will work, and, and as you can see from the drive-through we have right now, existing over in, you know, the existing store, people will find their way around the drive-throughs, and they're gonna find places to park, and they're gonna, they're gonna find their way in and out, they, they're gonna find their way around. This, you know, and what we're trying to illustrate is, is it, I mean, it just makes it much easier for people to travel in and out of that parking lot, it's easy for the customers. For us, this is, I mean, we've been out down here for twenty years, and, you know, boxed into that small building, and the drive-through used to come up Mill Street and pull in, and cars would back up into the main street, and back in the old days, so then we improved, and we were able to, you know, add that little weird-shaped drive-through over there. This for us is, I mean, we want this to be the best of the best, and that's the plan that we're, we're trying to, you know, put forward to the town, is what we feel is the best of the best. Will people find their way around? Yes, they'll find their way around, will it's, will it, you know, be a huge impediment on business? No, it won't be. But like I say, from a standpoint of what we've been told in different towns, this escape lane, usually, they, you know, the, the fire and the police, emergency vehicles like to keep that open, so that they can access the back of the building at all times, so there's no backup and there's no problems. Our drive-through typically should have no more than, you know, out to here, you know, seven cars, you know, eight cars maybe stacked, so we're not talking about stacking in the road, that, that would be absolutely disastrous for us, if we even came close to the road. The reason we built the store, the size that we built the store, Duncan is now coming out with a design, it's, it's like eighteen hundred and fifty square feet, and it's a small design store, it costs less to build. Um, with this store, our intention was, you know, we've also been, you know, always wanted to have a lot more seating, we want a place to, you know, that people can gather, people can, you know, come, you can come with your family, you can sit down, have donuts, and eat in the morning, talk to neighbors, whatever, so we wanted a larger-sized building, which, if we scaled the building down, we could probably get a little more space around the back in order to do this, but that isn't, wasn't our intention, we really wanted to, we wanna showplace, we wanna, you know, the best of the best here, and this was, like I say, is the best of the best design, and, you know, that's why we're, we're not, I mean, this, this is the way we think that, you know, the site works best, and that we think that the building works best, and we're not traffic engineers ourselves, you know, so we're just, this is, we've just seen what works and what doesn't work, and that's what we're trying to put forward.
Again, I, I, from the beginning, I like the design, the layout, the concept behind it, the drawing people on the main street, and encouraging foot traffic, and, and like you say, have a sit-down and a cup of coffee, it's phenomenal. What's over there where that compass rose is sitting, it keeps sticking in the back of my head, it's a police station, and, and public safety is paramount.
We're in agreement on that, we're in agreement on that.
Would the, would the board entertain an opinion from a traffic consultant? I mean, I, I can't imagine there aren't, this hasn't been studied a million times, it was, yeah, I, I don't know how you all feel about that, whether it would affect your decisions at all, um, if obviously, there was some input from the parties that are concerned, um.
Mike.
My personal thought on it is, a traffic consultant's great, um, but they're just going with theoretical, um, although it's not a perfect situation, we're kinda relying on the people that are living and breathing in this town, as compared to an engineer giving us the overall global, um, and, not that the overall global isn't the, the way that most things are done, um, but again, I, you know, based on our, who we have, who we're paying to support us through our police chief, our town engineer, and our highway superintendent, where they, where they have the concern, I'd be, I personally would be more apt to, again, listen to their concerns than what it, than you wasting the money, or, again, in my opinion, you spending the money on a traffic engineer to tell me differently, uh, I, it would, it certainly would make me think more, but I don't know if I would take that over their concerns, um, just to be straight.
I appreciate your advice.
And, and I raised that with Ken, 'cause, you know, he'll be the first, just as our engineers.
Right.
We're not traffic engineers.
Yep.
Like he said, you know, this is, this is his opinion, but he would certainly be open to having a traffic consultant, somebody that does that for a living, you know, to weigh in and alleviate his concerns, you know, he, it wasn't, nope, this is the way I feel, you know, I've been doing this for so long, and I'm, this is what I know, you know, so.
So you questioned him, he was open to that?
I, I asked him if he, if, if we were to present a traffic study, yeah, but he, but he was open to it, and he said, you know, of course, you know, this is his opinion, and, you know, quite frankly, what he says, he wanted to voice his concern, so if, if, if it got bills and there was a problem, he could say, you know, I looked at it, and that was, that was my opinion, you know?
I just think that if, you know, the idea of putting it this way, and then if it, there's a problem, changing it, sounds easy, but I think it's a lot harder than everyone thinks, because now your parking is square, you're, you're paved, you're curved, everything about it becomes a major task for you guys to change. And that would be, that would be my fear of saying, all right, let's try it, see what happens, because, I think Rick brought it up, if that does happen, and all of a sudden, you have a cruiser that's trapped in, for whether it's, you know, ten seconds or half a minute, that leads to someone potentially having an issue or passing away in a traffic accident, you know, where do we land on that one?
Well, in terms of the ankle parking, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, one of our big objectives here is to get as many parking spots as we can, even if, you know, it's square, so, even if it was one-way, I mean, I think we're rolling with, with the squared-up parking, am I wrong, Steve, or?
No, I'd like to, I'd like to stay with the squared-up parking, but, you know, obviously, you know, I'd like the egress and, you know, in and out, but.
Mister Chairman, I spoke with, I'm sorry.
Nope.
I was gonna say, we spoke today.
Yeah.
And, uh, as it relates to your, uh, suggestion, that could delay, you know, approval or, or action on the plan, so just that you know that.
Yeah.
And, uh, Brandon was talking about today, because we'll have to send it to the appropriate priorities as well.
So right now, we're talking, if you go angular, you may lose two spots, you can pick up one here, you can easily pick up one there.
Sorry. Well, the issue is.
It's outside of your buffer.
Well, as far as geometry goes, you know, in order to angle those spots up, it's gonna take more area to get the same number of spots.
Right, right.
Also, and where we've been with conservation is, we, we basically, I don't wanna say we've pushed the envelope, but there, there's no way we can go back to them and ask for more of a previous area.
One more of them, not affecting the air within them at all?
No, it is, the, the, so the, the whole, the whole site out, sorry.
Yep, no.
This blue line, I mean.
Well, yeah, percentage of, of, of the customer base is, state comes in as opposed to just drives through.
Yeah, it's about sixty, sixty-five percent will go through the drive-through.
Sixty-five percent.
Might be a little bit lower amount on the weekends, 'cause, you know, kids like to come to home and things like that, you know, but.
Yeah, they come in.
They come in and they like to, yeah.
But I mean, people who actually come in and sit down and stay.
Um, well.
I mean, I know you don't have much space there now, but there are a couple of few tables.
Yeah, over, it, the least amount of people sit in Pepperell, the most amount of people sit over in Hubbard, Hubbard has a nice dining room area, and, uh, that's what we're gonna create in this store, so that people can come in, they can meet, they can sit down, have some soft seating in there, um.
Is that the store right near Route Two?
Yes.
So I, I think you'd get even more people, especially if you consider the town fields, you know, and, and, and the courts, and, this, you know, nothing against Hubbard, but it's, it's muter rail, I mean, that's, that's, this is a much slower-paced spot, and I think you're, you're gonna see even more, hopefully, more people, again, I, I think it's a fantastic concept, I'm just.
Yeah, that's the goal, 'cause obviously, the more people that go in the store, the less there's gonna be in the drive-through line, so.
So you're looking to shift that sixty to maybe fifty, fifty, you know?
Yeah, we're talking about a small percentage of the day where, where you actually have these peak numbers, I mean.
Yeah, right.
A large portion of the day, this is just, this gotta be, you know, seven, nine. You know, and at that point, you're providing the most amount of flexibility to somebody, you know.
Who might do it anyways at that point in time of the day.
Yeah.
Right?
Well, at that point in time of the day, they're probably not in a big, a big hurry as the guy at seven o'clock, right, so, you know, they, they have to wait a couple of minutes, it's probably not a big deal, or they gotta wait to back out, it's not a big deal. It's seven o'clock in the morning, and you gotta be to work at seven-thirty, and you're sitting in line, someone backs out in front of you, it becomes a big deal.
There's a lot less people that come in in the morning, I guess, to answer your question, that peak hours, a lot less people that'll be sitting down during the peak hours, then we'll be sitting down a little bit after the peak, all late in the peak.
So, all right, board, how would you feel, would that help?
What helped?
Making a decision if they did get a, another opinion on this ingress and egress, bro?
Well, you've already heard my thought.
Yeah, I echo, uh.
Rick?
I echo Al, I, I, you know, I, I appreciate the offer, and I think it's, it, you know, as we've all said, none of us are traffic engineers, but there's still that, that station next door, I, I really would like to see this flow in one direction, and if, if off-peak hours, people sneak out the one-way, as you say, people can find their spots, they'll, they'll do it, but, I think encouraging people to get in a pattern of behavior to go around that building.
Now, my only opinion is, is just like you said, I mean, where so many other stores are set up that way, where you essentially can come in and out here, having that potential, or having to sneak out or try to do that, to me, is more dangerous than, you know, routing everybody around, which is, was a big part of the, uh, police chief's concern, you know?
Right, but if you were to put in angular parking, for the most part, you would eliminate that, because it's virtually almost impossible for them to swing that car around to, to get out that way, wanna go out that way, because.
Could you over, how many spots are you over? You only need X, and you have Y.
Well, more parking is, the more parking is, is mu, it's much better, and it's, you know, when you, yeah, when you wanna, when you wanna talk about keeping cars off the street, and you wanna keep everything contained on the site, you have one parking spot or two parking spots, that's that one person that parks in the way of a police vehicle coming out, or not coming out, especially with the, the lacrosse going on over and back, I don't even know, I don't know how that is all gonna be dealt with, you know, and I haven't really dealt with that being down the other end of the street, you know, so.
Yeah, it hasn't been organized prior, so it's not, it'll be even more interesting now.
You can park at the community center, they're all athletes, they can, there's a little warm-ups jogging over.
Mike, what do you think about if they did an ingenious study?
Uh, personally?
Yeah.
The more, the more eyes look at it, I don't have an issue with that, you know?
Would that help in making a decision, another opinion?
Of course, yeah, yeah, maybe, maybe I'm missing something here, but, you know?
I mean, myself personally, I look at it, I don't, um, I'm trying to, myself, see, is there a real problem with cars going out this controversial entrance way? You know?
Again, maybe, again, may, may, maybe the traffic study will help the town engineer, maybe it'll help the police chief. Again, if, if they, if, if, at least for me, if they're satisfied, then I have less of a concern, because it's, it's, it's their
Yeah.
everyday life that we're talking about, and how they work, um, their par, their parking lot is limited, their, their space is limited, their traffic flow has, has been set for a long time, um, and if they, if the police chief said, you know, after the traffic study, and after what I've seen, I'm happy, and then the town engineer follows with the same, I would, you know, again, I, I, I lean on the experts of the, who's in their group, so.
I mean, it's all opinions here.
That's why I think, you know, to Steve's comment, I mean, one of the best things we could do would be even where it's not gonna dramatically change the site layout, would be to have somewhat of a trial period, you know, 'cause every store is unique, every area and, and the way they do it, you know? Um, obviously, if, if we open it up to two-way, and, you know, whatever that trial period is, you're gonna know real quick, I mean, if it's a problem, it's not like it's something that's gonna develop years down the road.
I'm, I'm not offended by the trial period, only because you're, then you're really adding confusion when you all of a sudden switch it for people, I just, that, and then I see a real nightmare, because then people are gonna be like, oh, yesterday, yesterday was the two-way, now it's one-way, what am I supposed to be doing? And you're only talking about, what are you gonna change, your signage, your striping, so you're gonna take a brand-new parking lot, and you're gonna spray over it in black, and then try to re-stripe it to, say, no exit? I, I mean, is that realistic at that point?
You could subtract some of the, some of the, some of the blacktop out front, put some landscaping in there, you know, to narrow down the, to narrow it down.
Right.
Um, and, and, you know, dramatically change, so that would only absolutely accommodate, you know?
Right, but then you're taking something that you just made brand-new with regards to, because that'll, that will affect your crosswalk, that'll affect your handicap on the sidewalk itself, right? Your handicap spotting where your transition down is, so anything that you do to narrow up, changes
Right.
a fair amount of stuff, again, just money, just money-wise, I just.
No, I agree with you.
You know what I mean, I just, I hate to see something that's done well and done right, and everything that you typically do, has a nice appearance once it's done, to then come in and try to tear it apart and make it look like it was when you first did it, never happens, and it just, to me, just sounds like a, more of a headache, heartache, but.
And I think that's part of the level of comfort we have in going forward with the two-way, just from what we've seen and experienced, that it's not gonna be an issue.
Well, here's, here's a question, how, how many do you have right next to a police station?
That, that, I'm not sure, but yeah, but I mean, the, the issue, I mean, I guess we're kinda going around and around, I mean, the, the issue is with turning movements, blocking this, and what we're saying is, is whether they go in or out, they gotta do the same turning movements, you know, going, going to the one-way really isn't gonna impact how things are gonna come out.
Turning movements are designed by your square parking, so, again, if you stay within the square parking, yes, your turning movements.
Even if it's ankle, Al, and, and, you know, and if you neck this up, like you said, you're still gonna turn out into, into the one lane that comes through.
Right, but you don't have cars facing you, so right now, your, your traffic is coming in, you have three cars that come in, or, or, let's say, three cars are trying to get out, that's sixty feet deep, all right? So that's one, two, three, that's sixty feet here, this car that's coming here wants to cross across the back of them to switch to this side. You're hoping that not, nobody from here is trying to make that turn coming in at the same time, or come out here at the same time, because now you're, you're, your own traffic flow that you've created, with this crossover from here to here, to get through your drive-through, creates the problem.
Yeah.
If you, if it's, if you don't have two-directional, you don't have that crossover.
So we, we've vetted this through, you know, you, we've done exactly the scenarios, you know, so, same token, you, you come in here, you know, obviously, you're gonna stay in your lane, and if the queuing is only back to here, I mean, your, your most peak times is gonna be back to here, you're gonna come all the way down this lane, you're gonna come in, you're gonna queue.
I still think your queuing, I still think your queuing numbers are way off with regards to space, because.
So let's say, let's say this queues and now backs up.
Yeah.
There's no way anybody can get out of that site until that clears up, because now, you know, if this line queues all the way back up, and this is the only way to get out, none of these people are gonna be able to get through that queuing line in order to get out of the site.
Vice versa, if, if that happens on the other direction, the only ones that can get out are potentially this one, these three, and maybe one handicap.
Right, and it's some of them, it's, but you see, you see what I'm saying, that's the belt and suspenders thing, where at least you have another option, and that's all we're trying to say. You know, so these people that would be hemmed in and couldn't get out here, like you're saying, they get the option to go around, you know, these folks here, there's at least another option to get out, and, you know, I, I hear you, you know, somebody's gonna have to let them out, but, you know, there's no way we can avoid, you know, this, this hypothetical situation where this backs up, but at least we've got another. there's no way we can avoid, you know, this, this hypothetical situation where this backs up, but at least we've got another option and that's all we're trying to provide for.
Yep.
Now, you say you spoke with the DPW director, after we call, after we spoke, you said you were gonna call and speak about this.
Yes, yep.
Seems to me that he doesn't agree with you still?
Uh, what do you mean? I mean, his, his opinion.
You said you were gonna try and convince Ken, convince Ken that this actually worked and he still had the same.
There was two objectives that, when I, when I talked to Ken, number one is, I wanted to get a handle on why it was, you know, what, what was his concern? I didn't know if it was, you know, issues with this making a left turn out of here, whether it's backing up, whether it was site congestion. And basically, his, his answer to that was, it's, he's really worried about the congestion through here, exactly what you're, you know, coming through there. Now, the second thing I wanted to ask him was, you know, cause we had talked about hiring a traffic consultant, so I at least wanted, you know, he's the one, him and the chief are the one we're leaning on as the technical opinion, so, two things I wanted to ask him is, would he be open to reviewing it? And kinda what you said, you know, is he comfortable taking that advice or is it something that would then be peer-reviewed? And he said, you know, absolutely, you know, he would entertain looking at a traffic, it's not like he's saying, nope, you know, I, you can throw anything you want in front of me, this is the way I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be, in some, some highway directions, some DPW guys are like that, you know. He was like, you know, no, this is my opinion, you know, same thing, I'm not a traffic consultant either, but he's an engineer, you, you know.
Yeah.
But, like any guy like that, he's, he's open, open to reviewing more information, you know, he had an open mind, so.
I, I'm not opposed to a traffic study, but it would have to be pretty convincing for me to change my thinking on this. I mean, just, again, as a, you know, what our job as a planning board is, is, you know, to look out for the best interest of the town and that just, you know, that, that permeates everything, that, every decision I have to come to at this table. And so, is this the best, and there's so much of this that's the best thing for the town.
But Rick, it seems to me that you're basically just making your decision based on the chief of police and the.
Oh, no, I had my concern before I read the chief's, and, and so, again, I'm not opposed to a traffic study, I'm not saying I would, I would ignore it, I'm just saying.
So you're saying that you can see, I mean, I've listened to their opinion, what can happen, cars backing this way to go that way or out this way and so forth, and I think it's, it's a congestion spot, no matter which way they're gonna go, as far as I can see. You know, if they have to stay and go out one way or try to back out to go the way they came in, I can see what he's saying here, myself, and, um, and I, and I can see, yeah, it, it's something that, are we just looking at it one, find it, yeah, trying to, I don't know, I, I need, I would need another opinion, like, okay, some guy that deals with traffic or does studies myself to help make a decision.
Can I propose that we ask the study be done?
Say that again, Mike, I didn't.
I'd like to propose that we go ahead and have this study done, with Gibb, Rick, Ken, and, and Mr. Shattuck.
Well, I mean, and hearing the town engineer.
Police chief and let's find out, maybe we're all missing something, you know, I don't know, so, maybe they can enlighten us.
I'm just.
And, you know, and then based on that, then we can go ahead and make a decision. But I would agree with Rick and Al that, you know, if the police chief and the, and the town engineer are saying, no way, Jose, then, you know, I think we're kinda hard-pressed to go against those decisions, personally.
Those people are our professionals that we rely on, just as you rely on Brandon and your attorney, et cetera. Those are our professionals, giving us professional advice.
Absolutely.
So it's not just on a whim, this is whom we look to as a board to make the proper decision. And both of those parties are opposed to the plan as it's laid down on the table.
And at the end of the day, we see wants to be a good neighbor, so I mean, sure, he wants, I mean, our, our goal isn't just to get it built this way, we, we want everybody on board to understand we're moving, and that's the, that's the bottom line, that's what we're just trying to open the door.
And I think it's, it's been demonstrated that the board wants this to be a success and wants this to move forward here. But the issue with traffic flow, and apparently the only issue is your traffic flow, which is stopping this from moving forward.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a great design, I'd like, like every part of it, I'm just concerned about, again, the traffic flow itself. And I think your, I think your numbers on queuing are, are low. From, and again, I, I live, eat and breathe in Pepperdome here, almost all day, every day, either driving but through or doing something right here all the time, and trust me, I know your, your counts are, can get well past that seven in that queue quite a, quite a bit during the day, and that's what I don't wanna have, is that.
So you go to.
Have a lower number, what's that?
You go to Dunkin' Donuts or what?
I'll grab, I'll grab a donut, I'll grab a sandwich, I'll grab a sandwich out of there, I don't drink much coffee from that.
Al runs on Dunkin', yeah.
I do.
Go for it, for coffee, so.
No, I'm not a big coffee drinker, but I'll, they, they have Sprite too, which is good, water, I drink a lot of water. But no, again, you know, like you said, you've, you've learned on your other one with regards to having to readjust and make the zigzag come around, so I know you're, you know, again, trying to work with the design with what you have for a site, I think it's a great idea. Um, I just don't want an extended queue now becoming part of the parking question and, again, whether it works two-direction better or one-direction better, maybe that is the answer for getting a, you know, having someone do this traffic study. Again, we, I, I try to rely on Ken and, you know, Peter and, you know, especially the police where he's living right next to you right now, more than anything else, so.
We certainly, you know, respect the, you know, the, the boards and the people that you, you know, the individuals that you guys rely on, and I totally understand that. And we wouldn't wanna, you know, do something or have you, you know, um, we wanna go along with the way everybody, you know, the, the town officials wanna go. And so, a traffic study being done, maybe enlighten the police chief or maybe there's something that, you know, that's there or isn't there and certainly, um, you know, we want it to work, I mean, we definitely want it to work right, there's no question about it.
Steve, um, have any of you, I mean, you've gone back and forth with Ken, have you any just more discussion with the chief?
The, the chief was present at that same meeting, yeah.
About another opinion?
Uh, not, not regarding the traffic study, no, the only person I spoke to, Ted, we just talked about this today, was Ken.
So you haven't, you know, discussed your thoughts about this and where, you know, I mean, your feeling of congestion and cars going this way or that way, you haven't really had any more discussion with him?
I.
Other than just his comments that we read?
Right, I, I haven't sat down with the chief, I think is what you're asking, no.
Can I throw out a stupid question? Have you thought about just flip-flopping that? I know you typically try to go in right, out, left. But the flip-flop creates just your out on, on the, on, your out would be on your police station side.
Basically turn around the whole thing, right?
Because then you don't have any in coming in next to the police station, which, so you're only.
Just an out.
Just an out, and then what that would do is, any backup if a police is coming out, they're, they're not worried about what, what's happening here because that car can see, because you've already adjusted your fence, so this is a clear sightline, they see blue lights, all right, we're gonna hold.
The passenger side windows, if you're trying to come in here and drive into the other.
Oh, passenger side.
Yeah, and the only other reason that's kinda was, you know, and, and what we're talking was that small period of time and it's that peak time, and it's your eastbound movement, so, you know, the whole flow is to.
It would work proper in England.
He said it might be a stupid question, he's saying that.
It works in England, I don't know, I'm sticking with that.
Get your European.
Yes, either, they're all set.
I think you're smarter than that, Al.
I am, well, I'm trying to, trying to think outside the box to try to make everybody happy.
Yeah.
Well, that isn't gonna work.
So, you're still advocating for a traffic study, is that what you wanna do tonight? I think it's obvious that the, I don't wanna speak to the board, but how they feel about, it seems like more of a positive feel for the one-way through this evening, but we still have a problem with the plan as presented.
The other thing is Chuck sat in on the first meeting on this, and whether he still would wanna be to vote. I mean, like, he, he has a opinion probably too.
Well, that's another question, from a technical standpoint, there's only four sitting tonight, we need all four of your votes, correct?
Right.
But Chuck did attend the first meeting and he would be eligible to sit at the next one.
With video, yeah. So really, when it comes, I mean, from what I'm hearing, you know, if we had to move forward today with the two-way, that's not gonna happen tonight, it's essentially, so the, the decision really comes down to, if we're gonna move forward with this two-way, we're gonna come up with a traffic study?
I don't see any other, yeah.
That is, and see where it goes, but yeah.
If what I'm hearing from you, if you were thinking, if we were gonna vote tonight, it sounds like they're not gonna vote for the way you want it.
Do you guys wanna admit it, even?
Myself, I'm on the fence, one way or the other, I don't know, I, I'm just trying to see it and I can't see it and I don't, I'd love to see a commu- computer animation, you know, what could happen, you know, blue lights coming this way or anything like that.
Where are.
Ideally, I'd like to see this building over here, and the parking over here.
Well, then you gotta cross over the, the, pedestrians would have to come across the, uh, the drive-through lane, which is, yeah, scary in its own right.
You've gone through a trial and error to come up with this lane, and it's the reason why that's a lane.
Drive-through lane stops everything.
What are the stores you have that have this situation where you don't have anything in front at all and you have the, almost the, do you have anything that's almost identical to this?
I was looking all over on Google, the only one that I know, and it's not yours, is, is the Clinton site there.
Right.
Which is almost identical.
Over across from Shaw's, where Shaw's is over there, and Nvidia Bank, I think, is directly across the street.
And that's, that's, has this, a similar layout to this without the parking in front?
Yes.
Yeah.
There's a strip mall over here with that, so it changes it a little bit, there's a strip mall, so there's a lot of parking, there's a gas station over here. So, I mean, it's, it has the same elements, but it, it, it has a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, I, I personally don't have a problem driving there in the morning and, and watching, I mean, again, it's, and who knows, maybe even town engineer might have the desire to drive over there and take a look too.
Well, you love going riding around.
There you go. I'm, somebody retired like you.
I wish.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're still sleeping while I'm driving around.
How long is a traffic study taking to get done?
How, how long for a traffic study? I mean, it's really a circulation issue, we're saying traffic study, so, when you say traffic study, a lot of times we're looking at traffic counts and how much traffic's going. That's really not what we're looking at here, because most, most of the business that comes through here is passed through traffic. You know, it's not like a destination, like a compel or something, so, it's really just looking at, I mean, as they look at basic site flow, uh, turning movements and that sort of thing. So, I mean, really, it's giving an opinion, I mean, they're obviously gonna do some context. Ken actually gave me some numbers of a study that has, it was two years ago, but we got numbers on, on the, um, the number of vehicle trips and everything through there.
The police, the police can probably give you an idea of their, their call times, you know, how often they call during your peak hours.
Yeah.
Which would probably help also.
So I think there's enough information that exists that.
Could I suggest though that you confirm this with Ken and the chief before you go forward, make sure you address their issues, you know, whatever.
See how if they feel.
Whatever they are, you don't wanna have them say, well, you haven't addressed it and we need further information.
Yeah, I think we probably.
You don't wanna delay this anymore than you.
Yeah, we don't wanna do report, that's, we don't wanna spend any more money, we need to.
I would suggest that you coordinate that with DPW.
Yeah. Yeah, well, as we talked, I mean, that's, I mean, he told me exactly what his concerns are, yeah, so.
Again, just try and, don't want this to, you know, don't wanna come back and say, oh, no, we need X and what's the problem?
I think the most important thing is to have the, maybe the, the chief and, uh, the, is it Ken from the DPW?
Yeah.
Have him, them speak directly to the traffic engineer and, you know, I mean, at the end of the day, if, if, if they're not convinced by what he says, then I understand that we're gonna go with a one-way, you know what I mean? And that's, that's kind of, you know, I, I definitely, definitely understand and want them to be happy and satisfied with it.
Well, I would suggest too, is that you, I mean, that's why I asked, have you done any more talk to the chief with this and your concerns? I know you have with Ken, but, you know, see if he, you know, we're going, looking, we wanna try to, and we're looking for another opinion here and.
Yeah, well, I mean, a lot of the conversations are exactly like the one, ones we had, where, you know, I've got no data, numbers or background, but it's just my opinion, like you said, I, I look at this and I see this, but, you, you know.
Yep.
That's where tech, that's where a professional can weigh in and, and knows what they're doing and, and explain, you say, okay, I didn't realize that, that's what, the reason why I.
Calm my fears.
Yeah, so.
Get me on, get me away from the edge.
Does that sound like a course of action?
Yeah, I just think from a timing standpoint, obviously, we'd like to wrap this up. I, I think the intent is to get this done by the next meeting, you know, at least done, out there, discussed, and then, that's what, two weeks?
Well, I think that was on the.
That's entirely up to you folks, working with the DPW director and the police chief, getting them the information they need.
Right, but your next meeting is two weeks.
Uh, we're actually gonna set the schedule this evening, I would suspect so, but I'll let Brandon know exactly. It'll be no more than three, I don't know what the dates look like, we're gonna determine that, our last item of business tonight, but, but I would assume it's two weeks.
So if we could get on the next meeting agenda and, you know, if we're on the next meeting agenda.
Continue with two D next meeting, the board can take that vote and, uh, we'll touch with Brandon and, and again, as far as, again, I just, just what the DPW and the fire chief, excuse me, police chief need to, to, you know, looking at that report.
Yeah, because.
Cause we're gonna re, once again, rely on them for their opinion.
And so at the end of the day though, I mean, just, everything else we've gone through, every other issue we seem good on, so, I mean, this is really the only outstanding.
Yeah, yeah, again, my only.
It's not a, a bad or a.
Yeah, outside of, we, I think, based on what we originally saw in your original presentation, we were happy with pretty much everything other than, you know, answering the questions from Ken, DPW.
The cons column issue.
Right, the cons column, and all those items have been hit, you know, you answered the one tonight with regards to the drainage for me, which was really the only outstanding one that I could find in the comments coming back and forth. Um, as long as Ken's happy with that, with regards to dealing with that catch-based structure out on Main Street, you know, that pretty much has, you know, resolved all of those. The only ones that really, that's the only item left is traffic flow. Again, in my opinion.
Yeah, no, I, same thing here, myself, I, the rest of it, I, meets the zoning and so forth, are the concerns?
Go for it.
Yeah, I think this issue. Did you guys, can we take like a two-minute break and we, so we can go chat and then we, okay.
Have ice cream tonight, Rick?
None.
None?
No, I promised my students, I said, I, final exams are coming up, they start up next week, so I told them, you know, you gotta take care of body and mind, it's not just about studying, you gotta eat right, do the right things, and so I said.
Ice cream, dairy, that's good for you.
They know how much I appreciate it, I said, I'm not having ice cream, it's the first of the year, I told them.
Sugar?
Nothing.
Nothing, wow.
Cold turkey?
Cold turkey. Why, for how come? My students, they have to eat right, they have mighty bodies, they have final exam, midterm exams coming up, this is, this is big, I had freshmen in high school.
Had ice creams bad?
Well, ice cream is a, is.
It's his weakness, so.
Oh, it's his, so he's passing it on.
Well, no, I'm telling them, you know, don't, if someone offers you junk food, don't take it, have an apple, you know, so, I said.
Well, that's some advice.
Asking you to do this?
Just don't, yeah, just make sure you try to stay organic and don't get them from other countries that have herbicides and pesticides that we made illegal twenty years ago.
Whatever it means, not gonna tell my mom and dad what a shot.
So we're supposed to do it all this Christmas candy now?
And the Christmas ice cream.
If it were easy, everyone would do it, right?
Guys, I think what we'd like to do is present a study as quickly as possible, um, be placed in the agenda for the absolute next meeting and continue it, um, continue here until, I mean, what our intent's gonna be is to get it done again as quickly as possible, present it to the police chief, um, DPW and hopefully have them render some opinion to you guys before the meeting, if you'll least have and give you the thumbs up or a thumbs down.
So that'd be, to have your permission too, to speak directly with the chief and the DPW, have the consultant meet with them, you know, I think is the best.
Yeah, you always have that, yeah, you always have that, I mean. You always have that, yeah, you always have that, I mean.
Anything that I like to pronounce it.
We rely on them, so dealing with them direct is perfect.
And any of you, you're welcome to speak to the traffic consultant as well, you know, it's an open book, we want this, we want the best of the best, so.
Well, if he can come to that meeting.
When the meeting is.
I don't know, you know.
Okay.
For any show and tell, I don't know, that might help.
You want little matchboxes? You want, your truck or which car, which one?
You know, I like, he wants computer graphics.
He wants remote control cars when you can.
Fourteen days would put us at the twenty-third, is that a true statement? So we're, yeah.
Got my trusty little calendar.
No, wait a minute, we'll, we'll stop making, where are we gonna try to change our meeting dates so that we, we wouldn't be the same night as the selectmen? Is that still?
We could do that, but next week is a holiday.
I think when we.
Because we've talked about that, about having the other office, or what do you wanna do? Well.
Yeah, let's go to office or English.
Right, I think, I, I don't disagree with you, George, but at the same time, why go three weeks if, if they can get their work done in two? We can't meet next Monday anyways, it's a holiday.
Okay.
So that puts us on the twenty-third, would be the first available Monday that we would have. And even if we are meeting the same night as the selectmen, we could then adjust after that.
The twenty-third, I don't know if I'm gonna be here.
Oh, see, that's what the real story is.
I'm just making that up. How much, look at the.
Add the rest of the story.
Like, I can't imagine at that point, it should be a pretty quick meeting if, so it's gonna, you know, I think we'll hopefully know where we stand and what something drastic will change between now and then, so. We've got Christine over here, I know she's very anxious to get this thing wrapped up, so.
That's the only question I got, if the traffic. I'm quiet like a little church mouse. If the traffic or flow study came through that alleviated the concerns here, is the board actually saying that you would be more in favor of the ingress and egress on the police side? Is it really going to be dispositive?
Concerns of the DPW director and the police chief.
Yes, okay.
And they will recommend to the board what action they think should be taken. And the board considers that.
Okay. Well, with that, I'd like to make a motion to continue this meeting till the twenty-third of January two thousand seventeen at seven fifteen P M.
Second, somebody.
Somebody please.
Second it.
Motion made.
What time again, I'm sorry, seven?
Seven fifteen.
Mike seconded it. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, guys.
All right, guys.
Call me if you need anything else.
Okay, we're gonna make a motion to close this hearing?
Uh, no, we just made a motion to continue.
That would really confuse people. That'd be like running the drive-through on the other side of the building.
Close it.
You're gonna let you forget that? Turn it, turn it around, face myself.
Don't mind me, this has got my good.
It's a good idea, why don't we go on the drive-through? You know, actually, if we eliminated the drive-through altogether, we wouldn't have the problem.
That could be true.
Because they wouldn't build it.
That wouldn't be good.
Two is if you put a little more square footage, of how many people could go in. And it might give more area or, you wouldn't have the particular parking congestion.
Well, you know, we raised this concern in October, and I know they were dealing with so many other things, but anyways, we're moving on.
No, that was a great discussion, that was pointed, and I knew exactly what the board was looking for.
Especially, I don't know, I don't know why they would design it like that, it's true.
What item?
That's like a next.
Two thousand sixteen open space, Mr. Chandler, recommendation thing. Following permission and the committee, the open space plan is, uh, the board always apparently makes this recommendation, so I drafted something, which is including a package for George to sign. And as George pointed out, it's not the year one thousand seventeen, so we will try that.
My only question is, I thought, I thought they just funded.
At town meeting?
At town meeting, recreational.
That was for a study.
So how are we approving a plan if we don't have the study done yet?
Open space and recreation plan is completed, it's in draft form, it's completed, so good.
I've seen it, but how, but what you, prior to your arrival,
Yeah.
there was a town meeting vote that approved, um, monies to do a recreational plan study. That just happened. So this plan that we'd be endorsing doesn't include the study that we, as a town, just voted to fund.
Okay. It's all your vote, whatever you, whatever you don't just have an open space and recreation plan.
That was gonna be my question on this, is this connected to that town meeting?
I don't know, it says recreation. I didn't, I haven't read it, have you?
Nope.
I believe it's a five-year plan, every community across the state is required, just as we're required to do a master plan.
Did they send it to Tasha? Do we have a copy then?
I have a copy. But I, you'll have to come by the office, as I say, it's a thick printed document. You're welcome to take a look at it.
I'd like to look at it, I'm, that's just my opinion, I haven't even seen it.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I, I would like to know from, from the standpoint of town meeting, what that, if what we voted on.
Is that the result of it here?
Can't be.
They haven't even done the study yet, but it can't, can't be tied to it.
So I don't, is this, it's like a placeholder? You know what I mean, I know, you may not know the answer to that.
I don't know the answer to that. Again, saying it's a requirement.
I'd like to start by, A, take a look at it, and B, ask Paula how this connects to what that was, that took place in. Because if it's open space, it's.
I think, I think this is more just a con, the conservation end, but this is just what Paula wrote, right?
No, it's a committee that was put in place. It's open space and recreation, it's the entire gimmick of what the community is looking at, on both of those.
So, ask me to sign this, is that basically the board, we're just saying, me to sign this, what?
Oh, there he is.
Hello.
Um, I just wanted to remind you, lock the door.
I shall.
Thank you.
Thanks, Peggy.
Goodnight.
Goodnight.
Goodnight now. Yeah, so, uh, we need a vote of the board, but it appears that the board doesn't wanna endorse this plan at this time. But, again, we need to.
Is there, is there a time issue with this, with regards to our endorsement or?
It was presented to me as rather booting, so I did ask, I, I put it on right away because I thought it was a need for them to have it. The board has every right to take a look at the plan and.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to at least know what, again, I, does it tie to what we just approved monies for?
Yeah, I don't know yet.
I don't know what's going on at town meeting about this, but, yeah, what did you, Phil was.
And how many pages is that?
A lot. You can only get the.
Can, can, is it online?
I don't believe so, no.
Can we get it online?
I don't think so. I don't think it's online yet. I'll ask Paula.
Right. And, yeah, maybe if you can find out if there's a way to get another one printed, because I'm not gonna sit in the town hall for five hours to read it. That's for sure.
Yeah, it's not huge this year, so.
Yeah, I'd like to speak with Paula personally.
We need someone to.
I'll make a motion to table the, uh, the letter as written. On the open space recreation plan.
Who's gonna second this?
Second? Mike, Mike beat me to it.
All in favor, guys?
Aye.
All right. We have our two thousand eighteen. Let me, Ken, if I can just tack on this.
No, no, you can't.
What are you going to do? Are you, we could want this to be brought to us, or can we do it, or it, those of you that are interested are gonna go get it and read it?
I'm, I'm gonna call Paula, I'm gonna speak with Paula and find out what this is and how it connects with the, the vote that took at town meeting. On the monies that were appropriated to, to do this study, and if it's something different and it's something that's already been in place, I, you know, it's, it's a different animal, I'd just like some clarification.
You're gonna check into it too?
Well, yeah, I'll talk to Paula, but I'd like to, I'd like to see if there's a, I had asked if there's another copy that I could read it, or at least breeze through at home as compared to sitting in town hall for five hours. If it's that thick, it'll be, you know, along.
You can certainly have mine, but I'll check and see if it's online, but I, I don't believe it is.
Yeah.
So, I, I have a copy.
Well, again, yeah, I mean, or we can find out if the town has a budget to print a second copy.
Sure.
Reason I'm asking this is that if this is something they want answered, then we'll put it on next meeting, that we bring this back up, you know, not just table it, because they might be asking, so.
Yeah, good.
That's fine.
That makes sense.
All right, so you guys know.
Put on that this week.
Okay, yeah. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah. I know a town hall, listen.
I know you know the town, but gonna do you what you say.
Hey, I'm not napping all day like you, you know, like you, like you pointed out earlier.
Find the time to go there and let the Dunkin' Donuts, check them all out. All right, where are we next?
Planning board, budget, Mr. Chandler, two thousand eighteen.
What do we need to do with that?
Uh, it's just to show the board what, what's going on, there's no vote, it's just communication.
Okay, so this is our, what, proposed budget for?
Next year.
Physical year?
Correct.
Did we, uh, did you ever have a chance to, to, I thought I mentioned this, but maybe not, um, ask about the plan copier, the town plan copier, um, do we have, we have a full-scale plan copier in town that apparently, I, I guess, doesn't work or has issues. Um, and we had asked in the past about, you know, can we find out if that is something that can get up and running? Because sometimes we get eleven-by-seventeens of things that are next to impossible to review. And it'd be nice to be able to have a full-size print made of some of that.
Okay.
Is that something we'd check into to see if that is either unreparable, repairable, something we can add into our budget? Uh, because otherwise, I know we can go to like J and K Printing over in Air and have things made, but, um, five hundred dollars doesn't get you much with regards, with, with regards to printing.
Yeah, I was even aware there was one, so I was absolutely looking to it, yeah.
And is the thirty on the, the?
That's for the master plan.
Is that accurate? Or is that just our estimate?
Pretty accurate. I mean, we still need to, you know, do an RFP.
Right.
We're actually talking to NamCOG as well, and we feel it's accurate.
It's in the range, okay.
I'm also looking at some grants that might actually reduce that considerably.
Okay.
I've applied for three, four grants to, for this particular project.
Okay.
So we might be able to reduce it greatly, with luck.
We need a vote on this?
No, sir.
Just.
Just communication, yeah.
Community base.
Finally. So I included what last year's schedule was, and I also included what this year's holidays are, you'll see this quite a few Mondays. And Alan, I have, excuse me, George and I have talked about maybe getting bored to the bigger room. Certainly can't happen tonight, and I, I don't know the other, I know like con, con meets, I believe they, they meet here.
I do.
So I, I don't even know the, um, the, the days that that might be available, and I'm not sure that works.
You mean the big office?
Yeah, yeah.
The meeting room?
Conference A, didn't know if that would be.
Is there something magical about Monday dates? Do we have to have them on Monday, or is that something? Is there something magical about Mondays, compared to having it on a Thursday night or a Tuesday, or a Thursday?
Um, myself, uh, anything later than a Tuesday might interfere.
No, and that's important, I wanna make, make it as convenient for you guys as possible.
I wasn't sure whether we were like locked in.
Okay, well, let's throw it out. Any days?
Tuesdays are not good for me, and, and for the next year, Thursdays won't be either, okay? Mike?
Wednesdays are not good for me.
Wednesday's not good, Al?
Back to Monday. Right now, we're at Monday again.
No special day?
Tuesday and Thursdays typically are out for me, because I'm typically driving to act with my son for soccer, so.
Okay.
Well, the nice thing too is we're on, we got her on air in, in this room, so that's a plus, even though it's rather small.
So Monday is consensus here, other day?
It's fine, I just didn't know whether it was, you know, so that's, we have to have them on Mondays.
Now, when do the, are they like the first and second Monday of the month?
I think it's, I think they're the same as us, I believe they're first and third.
First and, and we're doing the first and third.
Right.
But if we went to second and fourth?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that a problem to us? No.
But, all Mondays.
You think you, you have all sorts of weird holidays that land in there?
Well, if this is, this is a third.
Hold on, I'm actually get, I'm all the way into August right now, right, in my chaos.
So you're working on this program right now?
I am.
This is the third, and this is the fourth, there's another first, this is the first, this is the third. Gotta be the third. Gotta be the third. So right now, it's a split vote, there's actually, there's actually more. No, it's a split. And so there's no more holidays on the third holiday, third day than there is on the fourth, so we could, we could flop off from the selectmen and not.
So if you start, if you start on the twenty-third and you go.
You might have to do a, a back-to-back one to get back on schedule.
Okay.
You know? The twenty-third and then do the thirty.
Because you, well, yeah, I mean, you, right now, you can go the twenty-third, then you can go February sixth, then you'd have to, this, um, February twentieth blows you off on going others, but then you, the twenty-seventh works, the thirteenth works on March, twenty-seventh works on March, the tenth works on April, twenty-fourth works on April, eighth works on May, twenty-second works on May, so I mean, there's a couple times that you miss, but, so.
And we can always pull a Tuesday one?
Those are the dates.
Yeah?
Okay.
Yeah, that's great. That sounds good.
Glad I, thank you.
I think that.
Okay, so y'all seen that and happy with those dates and, I mean, they've changed too.
I trust Al.
This is.
Yeah, judgment of that, so, works for me.
Okay.
How about you, Steve?
Hey, what do you folks say?
Sunday mornings, home Sunday.
Yeah, double check through that, see if it, see if it actually cross-references properly. Um, and we may actually, may work out that we actually have some times there, but like you said, we, we also have to find out if there's anybody else in this room, so that's a quick guess. If it doesn't work, let us know. There's no.
We're gonna meet the twenty-third, so we know that, so I'll take a look at this.
One at a time.
Yeah, one at a time for now. If this works, the board's happy with this, that's what, we'll move forward.
Great.
Whatever happened to Mark and you with the space?
Well, that's, yeah, that, before we do adjourn, I, I would like to ask that same question.
Go ahead and ask it.
Where's our open space, um?
Regulations?
Where, where do we stand with getting that out?
Town administrator is meeting with Mark and, um, Mark's boss, director of that agency, in February, to talk about it.
Okay, so.
It's where we are.
That's where he is, that's not where we are.
Okay.
Because I think we're, I, I've been waiting since November to, to get this distributed to the other. to the other departments.
Yeah, to the other, right.
And well, it says, no rush. What's the rush? What's the rush? Well, when does the selectmen certify the warrant for town meeting? What's the date of that?
I don't know.
Because in some towns this year, town meetings have been moved up, and I don't know when our town meeting is scheduled, but if it comes to needing to get to a selectmen's meeting to propose an open space residential development bylaw, which according to our charter says that. Right? That's, and that if we present it, the selectmen shall put it on the warrant, the wording in our new town charter. So I would like to see that, at least have a placeholder. And by all means, you know, Mark Andrews, discuss it with MWRA and anyone else and invite us. I don't, you know, I, we should be part of that discussion, but I think we need to give time for the town to, town boards to take a look at this and
Yeah.
provide feedback.
Well, that's what, that's what Mark and the selectmen said last time, is we didn't provide enough time for the other boards to look at it, so.
Right.
If we don't have a back to give to them, then we're.
Do you know, see why, um, Andrews' meeting with him and so forth?
I, I, I don't know. I don't want to speak for Mark. He's got questions, I know, but I'm new to the table on this one, so, uh, I, I only know that's, to my knowledge.
Now, you.
From my perspective, that's where that sits.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know.
Did you talk to Marcus? Shambo?
I have, yes. Yeah, and, um, he's the one that confirmed that they had that meeting sometime in February.
Okay.
And I'm sure I'll be invited to that as well, so.
Okay.
And that'll be here in town hall.
So do we wanna, if we wait till February, this is not gonna make?
Right, no, I, I, I don't, I, I think we're done with the draft, right? Wasn't Mark's last thing, he was supposed to give us the final
Mm-hmm.
version of the draft?
Yep.
So basically, I guess, because that the town manager has limited parts of this. It's all the town board that actually are the ones that are making most of the comments on it, correct?
Right.
Based on the charter itself.
Yeah.
So we should, we should at least get the, the final draft from Mark, so that way we can get it out to everybody. Our town administrator can give comments, the selectmen can give comments, everybody else can give comments at the same time, rather than waiting for one.
Mm-hmm.
Well, well, everyone will have it at the same time and have the same amount of time to comment.
With, with board's permission, I'd, I'd love to contact Mark and ask for that copy to be sent to me, and I'll, I'll personally get the copies made and distribute them to
Yeah.
To town hall, to people at DPW, ConsCon.
Yeah.
Recreation. All the, all the offices that need, would like to have a chance to review of.
Yeah.
I'll make a copy for everyone in this system.
Oh, fine with that.
You wanna do it?
Yeah.
I think it's a pretty good, big undertaking. Okay.
About the regs that are gonna go with this.
Excuse me?
The regulations, those are, those are under our domain. So that those were, those would be of our purview only. Anyways, I mean, certainly they're part of the town.
But don't we have to present it as a total package with, with the regs as well?
Because I thought we were gonna be working on that when, when.
Well, Mark was, Mark was supposed to come back and we were gonna work on that, but we were gonna, we, we were gonna take the what we already had, get that distributed out while, while they were making those comments on that, we were gonna be working on finalizing the regs themselves. But we haven't seen Mark.
Right. And the regs don't need to go to town meeting. Not to say that, you know, they aren't public record, of course, anybody can come and make comment and engage in that conversation, but the regs don't need approval through town meeting, but the bylaw does.
Okay.
So we have to get that, and, and we have a timeline specific to getting that into town meeting.
Correct.
Which we don't know what that date is.
Right.
May first.
May first, I heard from the background. Man behind the curtain.
My goodness.
Monday, May first.
I have my, I have some, yeah.
There you go.
So Monday, May first is town meeting.
Feel like a what?
So how many weeks prior to town meeting is the warrant need to be certified?
Yeah.
I don't know. Yeah.
I mean, I, I know in the town I work, they're having a town meeting in May, their warrant needs to be certified by the end of this month. Usually we're in a March, February, March timeframe.
Okay.
So.
Okay, so we're all in agreement that, and allow Rick to take on and do what he says he wants to do. And we could put it on our next meeting agenda to follow up Rick's report on how we.
Yeah, I'd like to actually see if we can get Mark on our agenda again to have him go through the, get back up on the.
You're gonna be talking to him.
I'll ask him if he'd like to come on the twenty-third.
And you're gonna need to let Steve know if he's gonna be here to put it on the agenda.
Yep.
All right, yeah.
Well, I'm gonna put the O S R D on the agenda anyway.
Right.
For discussion.
Yeah.
So whoever participates.
Right, but if we can get back here to start to get on the regs again, we can see he has.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm just saying. It'll still be, it'll be on more or less.
I'll let you know.
Yeah. All right. Anything else you need to know on that? Any questions, Steve?
No. Al's date's here.
No, my, um.
You?
What's that?
Go ahead.
Uh, my seat is up this year, I believe. Is that correct?
I don't know.
I think I was gonna check. I think my seat's up this year. I was gonna check on that.
Don't you know how long you've been at this?
I have no idea.
I think you're right.
I thought you keep commenting how good you are with numbers and you.
I am.
You even count how many years you.
There's certain things I try to block out.
He's just getting warmed up.
Ten years.
That's just, that's just.
Boy, oh, boy.
Child's play.
Popcorn.
So, okay, and you mentioning that, what, were you leading with that?
Um.
You've got something else to tell us or ask me?
No, I'm just curious.
You're just curious.
Just trying to check in.
Well, I suggest that maybe you could check with the town clerk. Might have that.